Thank you so much, Council President. And good morning, everyone, all my colleagues, folks in the public. This morning, I am so proud to be joined by a delegation from the Ukrainian Cultural Center in Los Angeles to recognize Ukrainian Independence Day. But before we go, the City Council was proud to unanimously approve two resolutions. One officially expressing the city's solidarity with Ukraine and the Ukrainian community, as well as celebrating Ukrainian Independence Day and the 80th anniversary of the Ukrainian Cultural Center. So we'd like to present those two proclamations to the community, and then we'll be finished after that.
As you're presenting the certificates, Councilmember Soto Martinez, we have a speaker on the queue, so I'll call on her now. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. Mr. Soto Martinez, I just want to thank you for bringing in this presentation. And really, I think the emotional honesty about what the community is struggling through and has been enduring for some time. I want to thank you for finding your voice and your space here in our city and for preserving that very special cultural history, so that we're a better people as a result of knowing each other's shared struggles. And so I just want to say, happy anniversary. Thank you for this long enduring legacy here in Los Angeles, for finding your space here. It just underscores how our city continues to be the beacon of hope for so many communities that find themselves here in Los Angeles. Happy anniversary.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to recuse myself from item 68. My wife has worked on this project.
Excellent.
But it's a caution of accusing myself. Item 68.
Item 68. We have a recusal for Mr. Kern Price.
The council may now vote on item 69.
All right. Item 69, call for a separate vote by Councilmember Rodriguez. Let's open the roll.
All right. This is item number one, the sewer service charge increase. That kind of makes sense. You know, the city is, that you're taking this up because the way the city runs, you run the city is kind of equivalent to about a sewer. That I, you know, you say you need all this extra money from the sewer service charge increase, but there's actually all kinds of other places you could get the money without charging people more for a sewer service. Like instead of increasing the sewer service rate, you could take the extra money you need from the LAPD's budget and put it towards whatever you need, wherever you need the extra money. Or you could take it away from the budget for encampment sweeps and put it towards whatever the, do you use that money to cover whatever the sewer service charge increase is here? So there's all kinds of other places you could take the money without charging people more money, but you'd rather just charge people more money while you just run the city into the ground. So yeah, Kevin needs to resign. You just need to stop screwing over the hillside via tennis.
I want to speak on the other items later, but for this one, by the way, Tom, you're already guilty on all counts. You have a corruption problem, as if you didn't know. So why are the rest of us having to bear the burden? Not that this isn't a serious issue, but meanwhile, look at the council member from the 15th district isn't even paying attention. You're sitting there talking to each other.
Mr. Gus, I'm going to need you to stick to item number one. Go ahead.
I am, and I'm pointing out that while this is going on, you've got to give me my time back, sir. Look at the council members not even paying attention. This is a corruption problem. This isn't a sewage or wastewater problem. This is a corruption problem. This is an LA Times problem for endorsing candidates that allow this corruption. We should have more convictions, more indictments, and lower rates. You should have used all of the money that you're asking for now that you squandered on corruption. Run a better government, vote for better people. This won't be a problem.
Okay. Mr. Gus, your time has expired on this item. Next caller.
Thank you. I just think that unfortunately, despite there being a corruption problem, that the citizens may probably look into paying this tax. I also own a beach house in Imperial Beach, California, the most polluted beach in the United States, and it smells like literal donkey shit every night over there. And it's because of both infrastructure problems on America's side and the Mexico side. So I really think that having good infrastructure is key, so that if you people want to not smell or have your home smelling like absolute shit, pay the rates, get the work done, because not updating your infrastructure causes it to break down and then not work. And when your pump systems don't work, your neighborhood smells like shit. I yield the rest of my time. Please put me back on for general public comment and for the rest of the items. Thank you.
Okay. Next caller.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. This is for item number one. Go ahead. You have one minute.
All right. So I actually approve of this tax increase. I like hearing this language that I'm hearing from the homeowners, the people that can actually make a difference in this city because they're the only ones with the resources to do so. It's so rare that you see them come down and show up for anything. And really, the only thing that makes them show up and see the workings of the city council is when it hurts their pockets and their bottom line and their home values and their wallet. So honestly, I'm a bit of an accelerationist. I think all the taxes on homeowners should be raised and business owners until they all get in the streets with the rest of us that have been protesting this bullshit system and this bullshit corruption, because this is all that gets their feet fucking, gets their ass off the couch and moves their feet down to City Hall. So actually, I think the rate increase should be 50, 100, 3,000%, because although I do have a lot of respect and a lot of love for Tessa Taylor, you know, she's very active, but most of the people aren't, and this is what gets them down there. So you know what? Raise the taxes higher. You heard something about the Tea Party from the beginning of our country earlier.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller.
My name is Vicente Diaz. I work for Comida Rápida at McDonald's, and I'm here to ask that you all support the ordinance for all the workers of fast food. So you may, continue, señora. Con esta ordenanza queremos que todos los trabajadores conozcan sus derechos.
With this ordinance, we want that all the workers become aware of their own rights.
Porque hay mucho robo de salario.
Because there's a lot of salaries, they steal the salary.
Yo, sin ir más lejos, yo he sido víctima de robo de salario hace dos meses atrás.
That's my case. I've been a victim of stealing my salary two months ago.
En lo cual si yo no supiera mis derechos, mi día de trabajo, yo no hubiera tenido ese dinero.
If I wouldn't know about my rights, I would have missed that money of that day that I did work.
Por favor, les pedimos su apoyo para que esa ordenanza sea efectiva, verdad, para que no haya más abuso.
So please request support us, so they can make effective that ordinance, so we don't endure more abuse.
Y hay otras muchas otras cosas que son en abuso, ¿verdad?, como represalias porque nosotros queremos conocer nuestros derechos y no nos dejan.
And there are many other things that are abuses too, like they don't want us to know about our rights, so they take retribution against us.
Les agradezco por escuchar y espero que tomen en cuenta.
So I want to say thank you for listening, and I hope that you take this into account. Good morning. Today, I'm here to talk about the ordinance of the fast food workers.
Para que todos los trabajadores.
So you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Tiene un minuto, señora, para el comentario público. Para que todos los trabajadores conozcamos nuestros derechos. Buenos días. Mi nombre es Lizeth Aguilar. Soy trabajadora de McDonald's. Hoy estoy aquí para pedirles que nos apoyen con una ordenanza para todos los trabajadores de la comida rápida.
Okay. So my name is Lizeth Aguilar, and I work at McDonald's, and I'm here today to ask you all to support us with the ordinance for the fast food workers.
Sobre esta ordenanza, para que todos los trabajadores tengamos entrenamientos para conocer nuestros derechos.
So, yeah, we want this ordinance, so all the workers, we have training, so we can know about our rights.
Voy a compartir la historia de mi compañero, Elias. Él no se encuentra aquí. Tuvo una emergencia el día de hoy. Tuvo que llevar a su tía al hospital, pero él es un trabajador de subway donde el día de ayer salieron ellos en huelga para protestar sobre sus derechos, para que les devuelvan el dinero robado, ya que mi compañero trabajó durante la pandemia más de ocho horas.
Okay. If you could pause. Just go ahead.
So yes, I want to share the story of my coworkers, Elias, which wanted to be here today, but he has to go to an emergency because his aunt is at the hospital. And he's a worker that, they went yesterday on strike to protest about their rights because they stole their money more than, he worked during the pandemic more than eight hours.
Continúe, señora. Y de las cuales solo le pagaron cuatro horas. Esto es una injusticia. La dueña de este lugar, o toda ayuda del gobierno.
Okay. So this is an injustice, because the owner of the place where he worked for eight hours and he was paid only four hours, she was working, oh, she got money from the government.
Continúe. Para poder pagarle a ellos, lo cual no lo hizo. Por eso estoy aquí para pedirles que se unan con nosotros para una ordenanza para los derechos de los trabajadores de comida rápida. Gracias, Dios les bendiga.
So she got money from the government in order to pay them, but she never did. So that's why I'm here, to ask you to join us in this petition, so we pass this ordinance.
This is general comment.
Okay. So you have one minute, and this will be your general public comment, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Baldazai. I represent the 37th district. I'm the congressional candidate for Inglewood, Westchester, Culver City, and South Central Los Angeles. The purpose of my visit today is, being that the World Cup, the Super Bowl, there's the World Cup in 2026 and the Super Bowl in 2027, and the Paralympics and the Olympics in 2028 are going to be arriving here in the city of Los Angeles, I want to make my services offered to the city. My father, just as a footnote, was head of security of the Olympic Village in 1984, and I remember when blue thunder used to roll across the city, protecting the citizens. I represent Medical Prime Group. We like to house the homeless, and I also own a Freedom House Recovery for those in detox. So I want to make it available to the city, who I can speak to here about the services that I can provide. If there are any questions or concerns, please give me a call at 888-278-5152, extension 800. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
Hello. Items number 52 and 55, honorable counsel.
So you have two minutes for the.
And general comment.
And general, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items first. Go ahead.
Thank you kindly. In regards to point 52 and allocating additional resources, I think, for economic development. Correlated to point 52 and 55 and numerous points, I'm just limited to the two. Piggybacking off what a lot of individuals had said earlier today, and just for note, my name is Julian Alexander-McCarra. There is an overwhelming amount of resources that are being allocated and, as we can see, misused. There are no results, unfortunately. And this has been the case since Obama's promise zone, which I was working with HUD as the Director of Economic Development for Pico Union Housing. Now, I speak to most of this board very sternly, as the first day you and I met Kevin DeLeon, I was 16. I was 16 years old. You told me and you shook my hand. You said, if I ever need anything, to contact you. I have not received an email, sir. I talked to Alphado.
Speaker, I'm going to ask that you stick to the items first before moving to general public comment.
Roger. All very relative. And at that, since July 13, June 13, 2024, I have been outreachings to the council members' department for this same topic for the Dream Foundation and our president in the moment as of October 16, 2023 of last year. So these funds that are being solicited on behalf of the city, I have been working for over a year to provide these services. You do not need these funds if you are not paying attention. There's only one council member making eye contact with me right now. Thank you, Kevin, for changing direction. You are on camera. General comment, please.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
In the picture as well, I'm the protemporum of this mock assembly for Gil塞dios when he was in the assembly for second, you were as well, for the 42nd district. Mara Jimenez is in the back of here, who was my first point of contact in Unis Hernandez. She never followed up with me. I have emailed the city attorney. In my final notes, I want to end with Corinthians. Love is patient, love is kind, love is not envious or boastful or arrogant or rude. It does not insist its own way. It does not, it is not irritable or resentful. It does not rejoice in the wrongdoing, but rejoices in the truth. And they left as soon as I brought out the Bible. It bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Adreamnow.com. I'm using my jewelry, LAModernVintage.com, to support this in the meanwhile until they can. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, Mr. City Attorney. Maybe just some of the keys are a little bit higher, so for the safety of our interpreter, maybe please take off their headphone. I would like to speak on item 3, 4, 5, 6, and the general public comment. I will begin with the item.
So you have three minutes for the items. Item number three was actually continued to September 24th, but you can speak to, you have three minutes for the other items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
4, 5, 6, 7, and the general. Number four. So now, let's move on to item number five. Now, let's move on to item number seven, and then general public comment. Continue on item number seven. General public comment.
Thank you. And Speaker, I know that you come to these meetings regularly, so again, if you would like an interpreter, please go ahead and let us know, and we can try to facilitate that. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Brocklanders, Los Angeles, private investigator. All open items and general public comment.
Okay. So you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
All right. 46. Removal of dead trees. Make sure they stop by and get that dead bush off of KDL's head. You're going downhill, buddy. 47. Transfer to the Bureau of Sanitation. Maybe they wouldn't need more money if they didn't, if it didn't take 10 people sitting for two hours to watch people talk for two minutes. You know, I mean, like I've said in the past, I'm no rocket surgeon, but it seems like that's about 19 hours of wasted time that could have been used, you know, burning dookie. 54. 85th anniversary of Toluca Lake. I would like to see my boy Jimmy in Toluca Lake and his uncle Marcellus up on some of the banners. I think they're good representatives of the area. Maybe we should get some banners for you guys, sticking this to the people of Toluca Lake for the sanitation, and throw one in for Damon and Stinks from Smokin' Scan. 55. Maybe you guys should start a program where you bring in the little gangsters and show them how to rob people with your pen. The people in your districts would still be getting robbed, but at least it wouldn't be at gunpoint. Or, I guess that's not true. You guys just have someone else hold the gun for you. 57. Start for Apollo Creed, Greed, excuse me. Marquise, maybe we can finally have that charity boxing match that you keep ducking when they dedicate it. I think that'd be a good time. Maybe we could get Sly down there, too. General public comment. To the guy that feels like rock, following Michelle. Do you really think that Shinique Figueroa is going to take you from behind after the meeting? Hugo, why don't you address the electoral corruption that Streets was asking you about? You really think that there are 80 family members that live in one house that all voted for you? The Monica Gagval seems to be broken. I noticed that the R's weren't rolling today. I think they have a warranty for that. Keep waiting for Veterans Week? I'm curious, since Russia supports Iran and Iran supports Hamas, Hugo, weren't you working the wrong rusty trombone this morning? And did I hear that they're selling Puerta, that Dodger Stadium tonight? Damon, Jason, let's go.
Yes, my name is Jason. I'm a Smokin' Scan viewer.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Let me get all available items and general public comment there.
So you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please keep in mind that you have been warned already, so please stay on topic. Go ahead.
Whoa, I'm shivering in my boots. Anyway, shout out to the smoking community. Hey, is there any way we can get like, maybe some signs posted up with like, um, return policies down there on, on like, you know, the gas station where they sell the ice, the ice bands or whatever? If we can get some, that'd be cool, though, because the other way I was down on Figueroa with this chick, and she was offering $5 for a dry rub and tug, and.
So this is not on topic. I'm going to move you to general public comment. Go ahead.
Well, that's my idea, sir. Anyway, as I was saying, I was down there with the chick, and you know, she had a little $5 rub and tug special going on, and after we finished up with that, she wanted me to run it to the, to the gas station to return a bag of ice. I'm like, you know, I don't think you can return a bag of ice or whatever. They said, yes, she does it all the time. I'm like, no, I'm pretty sure they have like, return policy for that. But no, she showed me the bag of ice. It was like half, half thawed out.
This doesn't seem to be on any topic on the agenda. Can we go to our next and final caller?
Yes, my name is Stella. I am speaking on general public comment.
Okay. So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Regarding the policy titled Proof of Full Vaccination COVID-19 Vaccine Required to Enter Certain Public Locations, A Sunset Is Not Enough. We, the people, demand a redress of the grievances caused by these unconstitutional and illegal ordinances. These ordinances were steamrolled by a LA City Council that was revealed to be filled with leadership who have characters of discrimination and racial prejudice. The city is trying to quietly roll back these policies, but we, the people, won't forget being turned away from the City Hall due to these discriminatory policies. We, the people, won't be, won't forget being told we're not allowed to go to school or work due to these discriminatory, unconstitutional, and pseudoscientific policies. Thank you for my time. Have a beautiful day. God bless you. God bless America.
Okay. Well, 66 is Leonard Shaffer. He's, you stuck him at the end of the agenda. This guy is a former cop. He's like on the Board of Commissioners for the Neighborhood Council, and you're trying to re-up him. You know, maybe he could, you know, he's not a bad guy, obviously. He's a part of the deep state, I would say in a nice way. He, he blocked actual overturn of government in Studio City by showing up and invoking rules as an outsider, totally and wildly inappropriate, but effective. I have to give the man credit. And then he sits there year after year. He could make room for one or the other. How about Jamie York? Hmm. Very, very bad failure on your part, Mr. Marcellus. Let's move on to number 67. 17 contracts for ITA with various professional services, each one up to 3 million. So let's see, up to 3, 3 times 17. We're getting close to 50 million bucks. No information, or there's a list at the end, and it's up to their discretion. That does not really meet the standards. Bayneuter Project, $350,000. It would be great to know that they're performing the job to harm or animal people, but I suppose they are. Carl Weathers, you're having a, this is Apollo Creed, for those who don't remember, the actor. He's dead, though, sadly. So this is a posthumous one. I want to thank Mr. Soto Martinez for also recognizing those who have come before and then died. The CD12, 120 grand. It's very interesting, as others have noted, to see John Lee do anything other than issue law enforcement over time. So very interesting. I assume, it's calling it homeless services. I'm assuming he means scraping homeless out of his area. And finally, I would just say, not, not finally, but this particular agenda is unfriendly. Okay? It's not a friendly agenda to public participation. And I just, I'm just reaching out to the council to see if they might be interested in trying to find a way to have good productive meetings.
General public comment.
Where we can really, yeah, the general public comment is, why not do a better job? Why not? Today, Girardi, the guy, the Tom Girardi, the attorney who's accused of embezzling $15 million of people's money and who Krikorian and Wesson inculcated, you know, gave a beautiful presentation, just like today, for the Guatemalan guy. So it's like, it kind of taints the feeling, because he was one of the great corruptos of the decade. And I just think that by putting agenda items clearly on the front of the people, you do a better job, and by allowing people, as Yaroslavski and Ramon both admitted in their previous stories, committee meetings is where some of the work is done. But to deny virtual access is simply antithetical to engaging the community. You can quote me on that. It's just really bad. And finally, if we're going to publish newsletters at the LA Times, please let's identify not just the white men and the black men, but also the black women and, you know, the white women. We saw Tracy Park, what a great shot.
Mr. Preven, your time has expired. And at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I understand that, Mr. Gus, you're saying that you were cut off. I'm going to ask that everybody lower their hands, if the staff could please lower their hands, and, Mr. Gus, if you could please press star nine to unmute now. Going once. Staff, is, is there anyone there?
There's still nine hands raised.
Okay. Let's try this one more time, and then we're going to move on. So I'm going to ask, please lower everybody's hands manually at this time. Mr. Gus, you're asserting that you were cut off. Please press star nine to raise your hand now, Mr. Gus. Go ahead.
Caller ending in 1881 was the first to raise their hand.
Please press star six to unmute.
Yes, thank you. I'm muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. This was not, we're.
Public comment, public comment, sir, and all items.
So, Mr. Candido, we are going to take one more caller. We are trying to get ahold of Mr. Gus, because he already got in and is saying that we disconnected.
That doesn't matter. That doesn't matter. I called in just like.
Go ahead.
Okay, let's try this again. Please raise your hand, Gus. Call and user five. Please unmute yourself. Call and user five, we cannot hear you.
This is your last opportunity to speak. Please press star six to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead. Which items would you like to speak to?
Okay. Yes, all items and general public comments.
So you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general. So go ahead with the items.
Yeah, that's what happens. DanielGus.substack.com. And the reason why you guys keep me from talking about things like sixty three, sixty four, sixty five, general, because I won online journalist of the year and I uncovered corruption that's rampant on these items and everything else. DanielGus.substack.com on sixty three, hey, this is a great idea. Can you imagine how many free spay neuters you could have had if you just didn't hire damn Stacy Gaines to be your G M, who's apparently done with the job after one year, except the mayor's office hasn't been able to deal with that or announce it or be transparent about it. Yes, sixty three is a great idea for the people in eleven, but the question is, why isn't being done all over the city? And by the way, you want to take a good idea and make it great? Take some of this multi-million dollar stuff that you're settling dog bite lawsuits and provide basic veterinary care and you're gonna lower the cost of running animal services. So sixty three is a great idea. Make it better and provide basic veterinary care in addition to spay neuter. You'll save money, you'll be a more humane L A, and I will stop, uh, talking about humane issues so I can go on to other business. Item number sixty four, fantastic. Mr. McCosker, same thing. You need more of this in your district. If you take some of this multi-million dollar stuff that you're squandering on one off, you almost lost a city employee named Leslie Korea. You're gonna pay not seven figures, eight figures you're gonna cost. You could have put all that money into sixty four and provide basic veterinary care for the poor people in your community. Imagine one dog bite incident, you could have had a lot more to do on sixty four. It's a great idea. Make it better. Start allocating money to spay neuter. Make it a requirement, enforce it, and provide basic veterinary care. And I will start calling for you guys to be mayor. Item number sixty five, same thing. Mr. Harris Dawson, you had some money with a, with a level five face bite after I warned you guys. I warned you guys. Start putting money into basic veterinary care, spay neuter. You won't have all the overcrowding. Imagine all the money, millions of dollars could have been in. I would have been cheering for all of you to be mayor. Uh, how much time do I have before general public comment?
You are on general public comment.
Did you grow? Okay, great. Hey, did you hear that you have a, that you have a parvo outbreak in C D eight and elsewhere in the city? How come animal services, and that mirrors as your G M, you have a rigged animal services commission? You have a parvo outbreak which can be transported off concrete, onto sneakers, into cars and homes and neighborhoods? How come animal services and Jackie Hamilton of the mayor's office hasn't notified the county department of public health about it? I'm gonna have a story about it. So where is the effectiveness? If you only reached out to me, I'd have told you this, but you've seen a substantial risk.
Caller, your time has expired. Mr. President, would you like to close? Public comment on the phones?
Public comment on the phones and in person is closed.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President, um, as well as colleagues. I'm, I'm gonna speak to the issues of thirty six and thirty seven as well, uh, too. Uh, both items that are on today's agenda that come out of the copper wire task force, uh, now called the Heavy Metal Task Force. Uh, these motions that have been forced today seek to combat the rapid vandalism of city streetlights, but in this case also to streetlight, or I should say telecommunications infrastructure. Item thirty six will prohibit the general public from possessing telecommunications cable. Now, this is not something that you or I could walk into any hardware store and purchase. Telecommunications cable is only available for those in the telecommunications industry. And yet it is something that the L A P D Heavy Metal Task Force has found time and time again in the possession of suspected wire, uh, copper wire thieves. By limiting possession of telecom cable to telecommunications companies and their approved contractors, well, we will help our law enforcement officers more clearly identify those who are vandalizing our city's telecommunications, uh, and infrastructure. Um, item thirty seven, uh, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, instructs our Bureau of Street Lighting to develop standards for branding the copper wire that goes into our city's streetlights. In other words, pu- public tax, uh, public taxpayer infrastructure that the taxpayers pay for. How can we imprint the seal or, uh, the, 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 the fact that it belongs to, uh, that infrastructure belongs to City Valley? Like item thirty six, this will help L A P D clearly identify stolen city property and aid our Heavy Metal Task Force in the crackdown on those who seek to use our city infrastructure as our personal piggy bank. With that, uh, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, I respectfully ask for an I vote.
All right. Seeing no other comments, that item is now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Pro vice, one no.
Mr. Hernandez, would you still like to be recorded as a no? All right, we'll record Mr. Hernandez as a no, which does not change the outcome.